Ernie, I'm calling this meeting of the Westminster Select Board. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
None. Acceptance of the minutes of the meeting of June 10th.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as printed.
Craig has moved we accept the minutes.
Aye. Abstained.
He wasn't here.
Oh, Sheldon. Sheldon's statements. Communications and public comments. Having none at the moment, unfinished business, construction of Henwood Hill discussion. I think last time we left it with discussion of engineering and we were going to get a scope of work for the work that the town could do. And where are we on that?
Just as one person out of, on the select board, I met with Russ this week when we discussed it. My personal feeling that if we go ahead and prove to put the guardrails up and approve to put the mirrors up, I think that we don't need an engineer because we're not going to be able to spend enough money to do anything, that he could get together with Chuckie and attack the corner, see what they can get done this year on fixing it. It seems like, once we do the guardrails, once we do the mirrors, we've at least handled some of the safety. The only thing left is that corner. And I think they could go in and actually do some work on it this year, and then we could come back a year from now and see what else we want to do. But I think if he came back with Chuck with a proposal of how much they could do on that corner, I would think that'd be the next step, my personal feeling. Because we only have so much money to spend. We have the 37, we do have some of that 80 that they could do, what Chuck could do with his crew. I think that if they came back to us with a realistic goal, what they could do on that corner, I don't think we, after talking to Russ, that we really need a retainer wall there. But I think that if we gave them permission to at least pursue it, not spend the money on the engineer, but go ahead and approve to put the guardrails and the mirror up, at least we have handled what we need to get done this year.
When you say not spend money on engineering, do you mean that we would not have an engineer look at the cutting off the corner?
We were going to have the engineer look at two different things.
Right.
By the time we spend that amount of money, we won't have nothing to fix. So why not have Chuck and Russ get together and see what we can do without spending the money on the engineer for this year? And see what we can, and have them come back to us and say, hey, listen, instead of spending the $20,000 on the engineer, I think we can do this much to improve that corner for this year. I think if we actually attacked the corner with our crew and do the other two things, we've, we solved a lot of it for what money we have in it. It's just my opinion.
I definitely agree the guardrails and the mirrors this year should be done. And...
Well, I'm not saying to go ahead, but I think they should come back to us. If we give Russ and Chuck permission to go ahead and look at just the corner, not raising the road, not changing the road, all the things that we talked about, but instead just attack the corner, what can we get done to fix that corner so we, two cars could go by, they could come back to us with what realistic they could get done this year.
This year, on that corner?
Yeah. I'm not saying we're going to walk away from it after that, I'm just saying, let's be realistic. We go and hire the engineer, we just spent all the money, we're not getting anything done. We'd be better off to say, well, as a crew, come back to us and see what you can get done for this year. Where I'm coming from.
Any other discussion, more discussion?
I think it's a good idea. I agree.
Sheldon, do you have an opinion?
Well, we need to move ahead and do something here. It's not what we had talked about. It's not what we had kind of agreed upon, but I guess anything would be better than doing nothing on it, so.
We wouldn't...
Just, just a question, because I wasn't here last week. We got prices on engineering, but we never discussed the fact that we were going to have it engineered, correct?
That's correct. We were going to come back and talk about what scope we were going to ask the engineers to look at, you know, what different scenarios. But after looking at what it was going to cost even to have them to design it, we wouldn't have no money left to do it.
I agree.
Okay?
And we, we definitely don't need, we don't need engineering to cut that corner off.
I think...
Our crew can do it.
Well, we're kind of putting it in front of them, they volunteer, but I think they need to come back to us before they do anything with a realistic, yes, we can do it or can't do it. I don't want to say that, yeah, they're going to go ahead and do it. But I think they need to be encouraged that we should, we're going to go ahead and put the guardrails in and the mirrors in.
And so have we decided that we're definitely putting the guardrails and the mirrors in?
Um, we haven't made an official vote, and we probably should. We should make a motion that we would authorize the town manager to pursue to install 600 feet of guardrail and not to exceed $11,000, and also to put the two, where's the mirrors?
Number four.
Yeah, number four, to install those, pursue with the mirrors, not to exceed, what, $500? Is that what, is that what is that number? I think so. It says 270 for posts and four, how many, how many posts in?
This is, this was the conversation that we had, that we're, we're assuming that we're going to have to add a second post, which would add $100 to each one of those prices. And we're talking two mirrors, so you're looking at 520 each, so you're looking at $1,040 plus the $11,000. So you're well beneath what you were talking about. And while we're doing that, I'd like to talk about the discussion on adding two more mirrors on the other sharp corner towards the Henwood Hill Swamp. That, that sharp.
Down by the Harlow, I call it the Harlow Corner.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's, yeah, I've always said I thought that corner was actually almost more dangerous because it's so steep, and you're going around the corner, but I don't think that's a bad idea at all while we're right doing it. It'd be a lot less expensive than trying to do it a year from now. So what's the total you think you would need? You need 11 for the guardrails, and then you need, oh, another five to put all the mirrors in, or four? Russ?
Probably not even that, Craig, but yes, somewhere in that range.
Why don't I make the motion that we would install...
Well, I have a question though first. Or what?
Well, I just want to say, just so that when we get done, we wouldn't exceed $15,000.
Is there a second for that motion? Yeah. Yeah, I have a question too.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear all the motion, but I, I have some questions about the mirrors, because I'm trying to come up with where you're coming up with your figures here. So we're going, let's just talk about the mirrors, and let's just talk about the first set of mirrors, not the second set of mirrors. So we're talking about two, three-foot mirrors on the proposed Henwood Hill problem that we're discussing, correct?
The north end.
According to this, it says $270 with 30, for 36-inch mirrors with posts. So the posts are extra?
That's correct.
So it should say without post, then?
So this is with one post, and we are assuming that we're going to need two posts, so we're adding another $100 to it to be safe. We haven't seen the mirrors, we really haven't seen how they're going to...
So what's the $420, then?
That's 48-inch mirrors.
And what are we talking about?
The 48-inch mirrors.
Thank you. That clarifies it.
So if we went that way, we'd have two mirrors at $520 each, and if you were, is that right?
That's correct. 540. Uh, 500, excuse me, 520 times two, 1,040.
Okay. And are you asking us to do those same two on the other end of the road?
I, I think that was...
Too, too much of an overkill on that other corner?
I'm still trying to picture areas with two mirrors on that one corner.
That's my question.
Because you're going to come down, you're going to go through that corner, there's going to be a mirror, you're going to see around the corner. You're going to come back up the corner, there's going to be a mirror at the same place, you're going to see mirrors around the corner, in the same, that's here.
Can I, can I interrupt? Can you please repeat that in the microphone? There's, there's people on the Zoom meeting that won't be able to hear what you said.
And identify yourself, Chuck, please, yeah.
What's that?
Identify yourself.
Chuck Lawrence, Road Foreman. What I think is, when you come down Henwood Hill Road, if you had one convex mirror, you'd be able to see around the corner going towards Gageville, and when you're coming back, the same mirror would also allow you to see up the hill around the corner.
We're on the Harlow end now you're talking about?
No, no, I'm still talking on the...
On the other one?
On your bad corner.
So you want to put it right in the corner?
Craig's corner.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the south end now, right?
No, he isn't.
It's the north end. We're on, we're still, we're still trying to take care of the first problem.
Okay, thank you, good.
Chuck, originally what we talked about was, it would be on each one of the straight, straightaways, but you're talking about putting it right in the corner.
Right, so when you were coming down the straightaway, you can see around the corner and see what's coming up the hill around that blind corner.
Yeah, if, if the mirror was right in the corner, you, that would work, you could get by, I assume.
Well, I would think so, yeah. We have a similar situation in, on Kissel Hill.
I think the conversation is that con, you know how a convex mirror?
Convex, right.
I think these are not, these are flat mirrors.
Uh, I don't think so.
I think that's, that's why we went with two, because they were flat mirrors, not convex. What you're talking about is, is right.
They're not, they're not flat.
No, I'm pretty, I was pretty sure the price I gave you is on a convex mirror.
If it's a convex mirror, I'm with you, Chuck, you only need one. But when we were at the site, we were talking about flat mirrors.
I don't, I don't remember, that was a month ago, but I just, I gave him a couple of prices for the mirrors, and I believe I gave him for convex ones.
Let's put the word convex in the motion, then.
I, I'm with you.
Yeah.
One convex mirror, we could get two, but one...
Both locations.
Yeah, both locations, and you would actually see what's coming. Might not be crystal clear, but you're going to see a vehicle coming around the corner.
Right. And I'm afraid if it's, if it's too good, then people are going to drive faster. Right now, they slow down because it's dangerous. If you take away a little bit of that, they're going to go faster.
Maybe. Sheldon?
Okay, Beck, before I ask for a repeat of the motion again, let's go back to the guardrails. So are we going to put 600 feet or 475 feet in?
I only move 600 because I just still think that comes down and then you go around the corner a little bit. While you're right doing it, why, why not, why not take that whole, that whole part of the road and make it safer? I, you can convince me not to, but I'm just thinking while you're right in there doing it.
And that would be an extra $1,800, $1,900, yes.
But...
Not extra, but the other footage.
$2,000. Okay, could I have the motion repeated, please?
We're going to change the motion. I'm, I like to move that we authorize Russ to go ahead and pursue, spend $11,000 on 600 feet of guide rail on the Henwood Hill Road, and also installing two convex mirrors on that road at a total cost not to exceed 1,100 bucks.
Did you just say we'd only need one convex mirror?
Yeah, but it's two different places now.
Pardon me?
It's two different places, so instead of getting four mirrors, we're only getting two, but we're going to put one on this Harlow end, I call it Harlow end, and one on the other end.
Okay, two things, you said not to exceed $1,100, $11,000, do you mean?
No, the first...
Oh, the mirror, you mean?
The mirror added up to 11, I mean, if you want to go a little higher, but...
No, that's fine, I understand. So, and Chuck, can you, can you put a mirror on that south end? There's not much of a, on that corner, it's straight down to the brook. Chuck is nodding.
Yes, I believe we can. Get a, I think up, just uphill around that corner, there's a swale there, a ditch that carries water.
Right.
I think just off the edge, right there, would be probably the place to put it, and then you can seat up around the corner, and as you come down, you'll be able to see the other way.
Okay.
Kind of the same scenario as up there, it'll be right on the corner.
Right. Okay.
I like it, I do.
Thank you.
I think we might have to do a little playing around, you know, a couple of guys, and sit in a truck and figure out exactly the best place to put it, but I think it can be done.
Turn it a little to the left, turn it a little to the right.
Exactly.
By purchasing two, we will also be able to play with them on our corner that we're talking about in all of our discussions. If we need two, we'll have the two, and then we'll come back to you to ask for the third one if we need it. But we will have them available for ourselves to make sure that we're doing the best job we can with the mirrors on the corner.
Okay, we have a motion, do you have the, do you have the motion, Millie? Yeah. That's all right, just say two mirrors, because we're not sure, so. $1,100, right? Yeah, for $1,100. So that's Craig's motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, he didn't, I'm sorry. Do we have more discussion, do we have more discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 opposed? That motion passes? And do we need a motion, I'm assuming we don't, that you, Russ and Chuck will come back with a discussion of, of that corner and what you can do on the corner this year?
Absolutely.
At the next meeting, you can tell us?
Yes.
Thank you.
I like it when Chuck raises his head up and down, that sounds good.
Can't hear you.
I said I like when Chuck nods his head up and down, that means good, he agrees.
Okay, Northwestern Community House, update.
We've, I've had two people that have called and asked to sign up, and I'll get together with, I already did get together with Russ to discuss it, but we had the ad come out, and we're just waiting to see if anybody else calls in, like to get at least one or two more. My question would be if we stack this committee, does it have to be sanctioned by the select board, doesn't it? I don't...
What do you mean, be an official committee? Is that what you mean?
I'm raising that as a question, I'm, I don't think, Russ, would we?
All they're doing is working for you as a...
Adviser.
Fact-finding. So I wouldn't think they would fall in under any strict guidelines.
I'll make sure we keep minutes, but basically if it's not a sanctioned group, we wouldn't have to have appointed people.
That would be my opinion. Yes, and then, yes, not a sanctioned group, not a sanctioned group and advisory committee, fact-finding committee. Thank you, Craig, for doing that. Any other discussion? Savage Gravel Pit, update.
I met with Russ on this one, and I feel after talking to Russ, we don't really need to go to a legal attorney. I met with Hampton Savage today. He was looking and agreed that we could get going in some verbal agreement like what Russ just handed to us, I just read it, it seems fine to me. If, I think you need a motion on it, then we can have a discussion, but I would move that we authorize the chairman of the board, which is Susan, to go ahead and sign this contract with Hampton Savage to do the soil samples on his property.
Do you, do you want to read the description of the contract? It's not very long, or do you want me to?
Yeah, one of you, go ahead.
Yeah. Description of contract, owner, Savage Trucking, to allow M&amp;W Soil's Engineering Accessibility of the property to extract soil samples for the town of Westminster. The permission for access to the site will be no longer than one working day, eight hours. All results of the testing will be the sole ownership of the town of Westminster. Site cleanup will be the responsibility of the town from the corrings, if any. The owner, Savage Trucking, will bear no expense of this soil collection activity.
The only thing that he asked, and doesn't have to be in writing, Russ, is that he would definitely want to be there, he's a little concerned that we might accidentally drill a hole through as well, lines are where his, he's got buried lines here and there, and it's not a big deal, but he was there, he can tell us where they are, so.
I'm assuming the soils engineering people know how to do this kind of thing?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, Craig has moved, made this motion.
Some move.
You, are you seconding, seconding it? And Sheldon's seconding the motion. Discussion on this contract.
Susan, as you pointed out, this is only a draft, but the date on the top, July 16, 2019, will have to be changed before Susan signs it, but I can do that after this meeting and get this signed in to you, Craig, do I?
Yeah, if you give it to me, I'll, maybe either I'll take it or you and I take it, either way.
Thank you.
All right, is there any more discussion? Questions? If not, all in favor of signing this contract with Hampton Savage for the Savage Gravel Pit? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed, passes. Yeah, when you change the date, Russ, then I'll sign it. And, and that will happen, do we know, relatively soon?
Yeah, I hope, as soon as Russ gets a hold of these people, we'll schedule it.
All right, thank you. Year-end budget discussion. We have the budget.
In your package, you have the general ledger sheet. I call your attention to the last line, which is on the last page of total expenditures. It shows $228,790.86. It's a little deceiving, we have not yet moved the retreatment monies, which is $125,000, out of that bottom line, which would leave us $103,790.86. And we have, are showing on page two of that document that I gave you, a loss of revenue this year of $18,001.70. So as it looks right now, which will change, we're still receiving revenue as we speak, it looks to be like it's going to be around $85,000 worth of surplus for this past year.
What was the $125,000 you said, that we have not, for what?
Retreatment.
Retreatment, okay.
And you're comfortable that this is all the bills we have for the rest of the year? We only got half a week?
We are not paying any more bills this year. Nothing has come in that we have not accounted for, that we're not expecting to push to next year.
Any discussion, questions? Do we want to go over anything? And then we'll have the final figures at the next meeting?
The final figures will be from your auditor, and our audit is scheduled for the July 30th and 31st. That's when you'll get your true story of the year and how it was processed out.
Can you tell me again what the interest earnings are, that they're so much higher than they're budgeted? I'm sure you told me, but...
That's one of the issues that we have for switching out a little bit of the information. We're showing it all on one line where I want to show you the post off, the, excuse me, the cemeteries has no interest put to that line, that's where the auditor will take and adjust that accordingly. It's on the second page, interest on cemetery fund. So it needs to be shifted around a little bit, but our interest earnings has gone up since we moved to the Mascoma Bank for the reasons of how they, they process our monies and the interest rates that they're showing us right now.
Thank you. And one more question, when we had the website worked on, where did that, where does that show up in the budget? Is that under computer? Contract?
I'm assuming it came out of...
That $26,000 bill, you're, is that what you're looking at, Sue?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, we, you know, we had web work done on the website, and I'm...
What page are you on?
Two. Two, under office supplies, computer contract services.
Yes, it is, yes, it's contracted services under the executive.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, just to point to clarity, you say page two, I don't even have a page two. I start out with page three of 15. I go forward to 15. I'm just making a question about what I've got in my hands. I'm missing a page.
Are you missing a page? Sorry about that. I have an extra one if you want it.
Wait later.
Hey, Russ, just to refresh my memory, this is only has last years, it doesn't have next year. I see we deficit spend like I knew we would, the waste on sanitation, so we showed a negative $21,000. Did we budget more next year for that line item?
Page two and page three, because I didn't...
We budgeted 3%. What we have found this year with, with the pandemic is our figures have gone up substantially while people are at home. They're not going to work, so they're staying at home, generating a lot more trash, so that's why that isn't a deficit number, but we went up 3% according to our contract for next year.
So we only went, so we only went 3% over that, what we originally did the year before, so we're still, good chance we'll be in the deficit on that one next year, too.
Well, hopefully if people go back to work and are leaving their homes as, I say, normal, that that won't be an issue.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want more time to look at this, more discussion?
Yes.
I'm happy to wait. Sheldon, do you want time to look at the... Kevin, you're good?
Yes. Nate Sodder, quick question?
Yep.
If I may?
Yep.
So we produce more trash, so we get charged more. I get that. Don't we have a contract that ties us to a specific dollar register? If we produce less, do we get money back? Why are we on the hook for that if we have a contract? You like purchasing heating oil ahead of time, you lock into a price.
Russ, can you answer that? I remember they came and we, anyway, go ahead.
Our price is by the ton, so we estimate our tonnage according to our history, and so this year we went over on our tonnage, hence we're paying a little bit more.
So our contract is by the price per ton?
Price per ton. For both recycling and trash.
Got you, thank you, Nate. Thank you, Nate. More questions, more discussion? Chuck?
So I don't, I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, but it's my understanding that if I have a surplus left in my budget, it goes back into the general fund. I would like to set it up so that the money stays in the highway department and gets split between retreatment and the bridge fund, because I don't believe we're putting enough money away now to, to take care of our needs in the future.
Okay. Well, that'll take some discussion for next year, but interesting. And the retreatment is essentially the paving of the roads. So what you're saying is any surplus from, say, this year would go into next year's...
It would actually...
But it's not a surplus, though.
We skip a year, so Chuck, we, we also give it back to the voters, too. You see what I'm saying? So it now gets skipped over to the, the next budget, and we start out where we were with this one, so...
I just, I just don't think that it's necessarily responsible for us to give back, say, I don't know, $150,000 when all it's going to be is pennies to the voter, but we have a lot of roads that need to be repaved, and we don't have the money to do it.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but we don't normally put it back this year. We take the surplus and put it into the following budget, like we just...
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? Like we started this year with surplus from the year...
And you put it into the, in the...
And you have a right to come to it.
Right.
Right. I'm assuming that that's a...
And then, and then you lower the tax rate.
And honestly, Chuck, in the past, what we've done is, in June, like right about now, if we had a huge one, we would say, let's go pave right now, you know, do a little more paving, because we know. But this is pretty close, because sometimes we've been 200, 300,000. You see what I'm saying?
Right.
But once we finish the year, it carries over to the, it skips the year and comes back.
What I'm saying is, what little bit you're going to amount to by throwing it into next year's budget, you ought to just start with a keen, clean slate and say that we spent it all. You know what I'm saying? Or we ought to figure out how to put away a little more money somewhere else, but this way, I was just thinking, it wouldn't hurt the taxpayers' pocketbooks quite so much.
Right, well, we've already passed the budget for the coming...
I know, I understand that. I'm just trying to say, when I started, that's what I said, I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but it's something to be thinking about.
In the future.
In the future, right.
But on the other hand, next year, the year we're going to enter, we could keep an eye on it and see where we are and if we...
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we can have that discussion.
Something to think about, yeah.
Question?
What's that?
I have a question.
Sheldon?
Can we go back? Russell, can you separate out on this solid waste thing? Do you have the difference in numbers between trash and recyclables? In front of you or not? Actually, I'm on, I don't know.
Page seven.
On the last page.
I think what you're asking for, what's the difference between disposing of waste and waste assessment is the... Good question.
Well, we have, we, we pay for tonnage on trash, and we pay for tonnage on recyclables. So we're $3,000 off at this point in time, so of that, do you have a number, which part of it is recyclables and which part of it is trash?
Not with me, Sheldon, but the number that you're looking at for disposing of waste is recycling and trash.
Is there a way we can get that number?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And where, are they still getting, because we voted last year on the recyclables to give them more money, so how does that fare into this little figure that you're throwing?
That's in there.
That's part of the 29?
I'm honestly not seeing where you're seeing 29.
Well, you got a minus $2,980. Under solid waste.
Are you on page seven?
That's a shortfall, correct?
Are you on page seven?
On the last page. Under solid waste. 003-25.
Ask me where it is, I'm not, I'm looking at 003-6300.
I don't see it either. I don't see what he's looking at.
I'm looking right here. And then solid waste is down here.
So it's a... $21,000.
You're looking, Sue, at what I'm looking at. I don't know what Sheldon's looking at. I can't find it.
We're about to find out.
And that's in the last four months. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. More time to look this over? Sheldon, a few more minutes? Good? Okay. There being no more discussion at the moment, let's go on to wage adoption for FY21. So, oh, Kevin, are we going to say something?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's feeling well. My last comments, I wanted to just build on last comments, so last year, we built off the Department of Labor Statistics, which come, which are enabled by the Social Security Administration. This is pretty much a standard, standard view. We arrived at a 1.6 baseline COLA, which is the cost of living adjustment. I hope everybody online and in the room can hear me. I want to be clear, concise, and coherent to the point. Social Security Administration calculates this every year based on a consumer price index for urban wage earners and clerical workers, something they arrive at called a CPI-dash-W. Now, the 1.6 that we benchmarked off last year for our increase was based upon their reported estimation. With only one quarter in the book as of April 22, 2020, it is already estimated by the Department of Labor, Bureau of Statistics, that this has moved all the way down to a 0.8 or one-half of the 1.6 benchmark that we begin with last year. I would also like to counsel everyone that this is not unusual. In 2016, 2010, and 2011, the cost of living adjustment was zero. Zero. And in 2017, our cost of living adjustment, based on the calculation that I've just expressed specifically, was 0.03. The only concern I would raise to the board is that, being that we have no updated statistic yet, Madam Chair, although it will come soon, it's not yet complete as to whether or not we should take that tally at 0.8 when it could be conceivably somewhat lower and/or even to a degree, maybe even higher. And if I may make one brief example, a very good analyst, Mary Johnson, she's a Social Security and Medicare Policy Analyst at the Senior Citizens League, obviously an advocate for the 65 million Americans that rely on Social Security, 45 million of those which are retired, and many of them in our community, as you know, COVID not related. She's simply pointing out that one's, just one cyclical impact in the index, in her case gasoline prices, which we all know that plummeted in the first quarter, can adversely affect this number. So I just wanted everyone to know that we looked at this very carefully with, with open eyes going in. We, we are still waiting, I would say, at least for one more piece of data within the next 20 to 30 days, that would at least give us somewhat of a clarity, considering the chaos that occurred in the general economy which they used to make these calculations. And thank you for everyone's time and consideration.
So are you suggesting that we wait for that data before we vote on the wage, wages and, can we do that?
Yeah, you, we can. I would recommend that we do, simply because, you know, as they say in economics, if you use a crystal ball, you're going to eat glass. So, but there's a possibility that it could be somewhat higher. There's also a risk it could be somewhat lower, but I think it's pretty much a general consensus for everyone that we're going to have a lower benchmark to increase wages this year. That would be my report to the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Question, can I ask? I never did understand this. In the COLA, does that include the costs of insurance? And if it does, being that we pay for a part of, for insurance, how does that figure in? Because every year we hear from how expensive the insurance keeps going up, but that would be part of that inflation. The cost of living is insurance, too, right?
That's a great question. Actually, a very good question. Every one of us can go to the Social Security website, we're all citizens, and we've all paid into it. Unfortunately, not all, what we would conceive to be reasonable increases in our expenses, healthcare, cost of a hamburger, replacing a tire, goes into the thinking. It's very broad, it's very general. So the answer to your question, not being a member of the Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics, why wait for that number, is I'm not really sure, although I can say in my experience, it's not something that's given specific weighting. It's kept pretty basic, to the point where they're looking at, again, as she says, the specific analyst that I cited, price of oil, price of gasoline, which goes, as you know, touches everything. Food, right? Food has to be carried on trucks to wherever it goes to, and of course, oil and gasoline are used to plant it, harvest it, right? So there's a lot that goes into it. So I hope I've answered your question. The answer is no, it's not, to my knowledge, it's not specifically utilized as an actual outlier or a specific variable, but it could be. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So, so my question is delaying a vote on the wages that would not affect, that has no effect on, when does this go into effect?
Well, they should have a, an updated estimate based on the three months of very interesting economic activity from April 22 to now, within the next, by, hopefully by July 22.
Right. But, but this doesn't affect our payroll, that would not, just leaving it, right? I'm asking you, Russ.
Yes, it doesn't affect our payroll, because it starts July 2nd. We, we pay out first wages, so we would need to know what to pay.
Well, Russ, in the past, what we have done, because you've been here when we did it, we would just make sure that they would know there was retroactive, so that, it does start there, but what we've done in the past, if we drag it on for a month, let's just say, and then we come up with, I don't know, some number of 1%, we go back and pay for that month that they didn't get that raise.
Retroactive, yeah.
Retroactive.
Craig, this is Sophia. Can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think if you budgeted the 1.6, is that what I'm hearing in your budget last year? That's what you kind of planned for?
2.133.
Oh, 2.133? I, I mean, this is just my opinion, but doing a retro pay is a pain in the neck. So it's just more labor, it's more intensive for the people that are doing payroll. If you have it budgeted, just give them the money. These guys have worked through all of this COVID stuff and kept the place going, and to fight over 1% or half a percent just to give it COLA, I mean, that's my personal opinion, but whatever you decide, I will try to decide tonight so that you don't have to do a retro pay. It's just a pain.
Thank you. Yep, sorry, go ahead.
I, I thought we were going to decide tonight, but he brought up a point. I'm just saying, we have done it that way. I don't have a problem with actually coming up with a number. I don't know if I totally agree that we have to give what's in there, because there's, yes, they did a lot, but we're also in a time that we've never been in before in my life, and there was a lot of people that don't have any jobs at all. I mean, you have to look at the whole picture. I've always been the one to give, give the, give them the raise, give them, but this is a really different year, and I, I, I'm actually for leaving tonight with a vote that this is where we go.
We had this, we had this discussion when we were first looking at the budget, and we had put in three, a 3% increase, and then we discussed making it lower, because as Kevin said, that the average COLA over the last 10 years has been less than 3%. So that's why we went to the 2.1, which I think at the time, that might have been, I think that was, at the time, the 2.1 was the COLA, right? That's why we decided on that.
Well, we actually moved above the COLA, it was 1.6, so we were actually recognizing the hard work and dedication of our employees, so it was actually above that. And again, we bring these in to make sure that we're accurate, and at least moving off a benchmark that everyone universally, you know, benches off of. So whether or not, you know, we decided a number tonight, that was not my objective. My objective was just to make sure that the numbers were accurate, and that anyone who was questioning where we got the number could make sure that the number, the veracity of that number was not only universally recognized, but accurate. So again, I'm with everyone else, depending on what you want to do tonight, I'm certainly ready, willing, and able to vote for a permanent, or for the number tonight.
I've got just a comment, and I wasn't sure when you said it, how that all played into it. You also have the Consumer Product Index that has to play into this, so that's what we buy as consumers, and that was at 2.5% from January. Do you have that? In your calculations?
Yeah, it's on the sheet.
Well, would not go into the, would not go into the COLA for the government. I'm just simply, the government, what we're using is a government benchmark. If we want to use it here in Westminster, we can. The, the benchmark for COLA is explicit, it's on the website, and I read it out specifically, the two benchmarks that they average it off of. That's the calculation by law. But at the end of the day, if you want to add it and say that that's something we should consider for our consideration, absolutely, because we all know there are certain things that aren't considered in this number that certainly affect us in the unique place, which is Westminster. So if we want to make that decision, that's certainly something we could do.
One question, Russ. Do we still have money set aside for merit raises?
For what? Say that, Anne, Craig.
For merit raises.
That was my question to Russ last time, so...
We have a small amount of money that we carry for merit raises, for the road crew specifically, as they go through the process of, of training. Everyone else is, is bottom dollar.
But we have sufficient money for merit increases that we need for the road crew, or that are earned by the road crew. I mean, they're the ones I'm particularly interested in, because...
We have money in there. I'm, I'm not saying it's sufficient, but we do have money in there.
But what we're talking is cost of living, not a merit. So tonight, so if we give, let's just say 1.6, everybody that's employed by this town gets a 1.6.
Right.
And then the road crew could qualify for some, something above it.
Right, at Russ's discretion.
Right.
Discussion. We want to vote on it tonight? Do we want to go to, Craig, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that, I'm having, even though we put it in every year, that's a long time ago we put it in, so I agree somewhat with sympathy, sympathy, I can't say her name, but I think 1.6 for right now, not, not that we couldn't adjust it later on down the road, but 1.6 starting in July...
in July, I think, I think that's where I'd be at right now. Being, it's the first time I've seen where the COLA in the state of Vermont are together. Because in the past, state of Vermont's always been higher. So.
And when you mean adjust it, when would it be possible to adjust it?
There's no reason why we couldn't come, if the country takes off and everybody's doing real right, we can still come back in October and give them a 1% increase or something. There's nothing saying we can't.
Because we have the money in the budget.
Yeah, we can't go over what she just said, the 2.13 or whatever Russ said it was.
Right.
Moving from a 1.6 benchmark or staying with it is simply staying neutral until, as Craig says, if things improve and we know more, I'm certainly comfortable with that. It's not that we're acting in a way that's, you know, over the top.
Any comments over here?
No, I'm good with a 1.6.
Okay, I think we need a motion for that if we're going to.
I'll go ahead and move that we give the cost of living for employees for the town of Westminster of 1.6%.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to give the employees of Westminster a cost of living increase of 1.6%. Is there a second? Oh, Kevin seconded. More discussion?
Is that for the year? Or is that?
Well, I think what Craig means is for the year unless we come back in later and increase it. And because we have.
Right. I mean, I agree with what she says. It would be a nightmare to go back and do it. But there's nothing stopping us from, I'm picking October, and all of a sudden we're going into the fall and things are good. We didn't spend whatever that percentage is that we set aside that we could come back and say, well, let's double that percentage and make it another 1% or half a percent and give it. And at the end of the year, they would come out to the same.
So subject to, and we don't have all the data, which I think is a fair observation. So subject to conclusion or more substantive data to the full final number, we could make an adjustment later on during the year.
Yeah, that's where I'm coming from. We're under discussion?
I'm looking at Sheldon. He looks like he was going to make.
I think we just should set it at 1.6 for the year period.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying theoretically, there's, as we go along, there's.
I mean, this could go the opposite way.
It could.
Be less than 1.6.
Yeah. And I'm not saying to go above that, but I'm just saying theoretically, we're a little less than what we put in there. So.
Can I amend the motion?
Yep.
I'd like to amend Craig's motion and add it to a 1.6 minimum with no intent for the remainder of the year to go below that floor. We could only possibly increase it as opposed to decrease it. Does that help you?
No, I think if we do the 1.6 period for the year, I'm happy with that.
Okay, I'll be happy with that too.
Yeah, I don't want to mislead employees and think that we're going to come back to it in October too. So I guess I agree with you. For right now, it's 1.6.
But we could, because we have money in there in the budget, we could if we, something happened. So the motion is to, the motion is to increase, give the employees a wage increase of 1.6% for FY '21.
Correct.
Yeah. More discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Windham County Sheriff's Contract.
In your packet, you have the corrected items that you folks needed to see. And it's on page four of seven, under reporting and documentation, Roman numeral two.
So I sent the proposed contract to Larry Slayson, and he sent back this suggested wording for ensuring that we get the hours that we pay for or we get the money back.
So these words are underlined. It came from Larry, you're saying? But the Sheriff's Department knows it's there?
Yes, then we sent, right. Chuck, you sent it to Mark, and then he sent this back.
I did. I sent it to Mark, and he approved it. And would like a signature tonight if possible with the corrected language.
That was the only thing that we were hung up on. And if he agrees to it and our attorney agrees to it, then I'll make a motion that we go ahead and sign the contract with the Windham Sheriff's Office for the fiscal year 2020/21.
Is there a second on Craig's motion?
I second it.
Seconded by Kevin. Discussion. Did Mark have any comment?
Where is that language exactly?
Is hers in red?
No, they're not.
Okay.
It's on page four of seven.
Bottom of page four, underlined.
Wait, and also on page two?
Sorry?
Yeah, under compensation. So B and C. Do you want me to read those?
These are all the underlined.
Pardon?
Is it the ones that are underlined?
That's correct.
Yes. So it says, compensation, the town shall pay to the office the sum up to $82,000 for the service provided under this agreement. And this is added. The town agrees to pay the office for hours of law enforcement services actually provided to the town during the term of this contract. C stands, the town agrees to prepay for services. Payments will be made in 12 equal payments of $6,000, 133, blah, blah, blah. D, any sums paid by the town to office in excess of coverage hours provided shall be reimbursed by the office to the town within 30 days of the end of the contract term or carried over to the next succeeding year's contract if applicable. And I think that's what was addressing our concerns. Am I correct?
Yeah.
And then under page four, under reporting and documentation, A2, the office will provide activity reports to the town through the utilization of the electronic sheriff's town activity reporting system. And added, the office shall track hours of service provided to the town and shall provide the town with a monthly summary of coverage hours.
So Susan, in front of you, you have the original contract to sign if you so choose.
So do we have more discussion? No? So shall we?
I move we accept this as with the change of.
We're already under discussion?
Yeah, we moved and seconded. So all in favor of accepting the sheriff's contract? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Did you want more discussion? Okay. All right. Thank you. Executive session, contractual matter. We still need some more material, so we're going to table that again. But next time, next time. Okay, new business, website clarification.
A couple of things. I just want to set the record straight that the website did have the DRB meetings and minutes, last meeting. I'm working with Fran to find them on her computer. I think she had the old website, but I'm not positive of that. We also have got the first upgrade that we've requested from our website folks for links to be posted on the front page. We have played around with it a little. We haven't had a lot of time right now with delinquent taxes coming up. But we have got a link on there that you can pull into documents within the website, which works really well. We also put our Zoom link on it for tonight, but we did have a hiccup with that, did I hear?
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened. I guess the link took, was incorrect somehow. Just took people to another meeting. There's people on now.
Okay, I took it from your.
And I copied and pasted it and sent it to you. So.
Yeah. Unreal. Okay.
I know that the town of Rockingham had had the same trouble. So I'm not sure, and that's not us. That wasn't for us. That was for them. So I'm not sure if there's a bug in Zoom or something's going on. Something to be figured out. But that's what happened.
Yeah, so can I just interject? The only way we knew was a Facebook message came and said, so that's how we went on. So you may hear feedback from other people that tried to reset the link and don't have Facebook.
Yeah, we copied. I know the town of Rockingham has had the same issue with setting up a meeting, and then they post the link up, and then somehow, it's something when you start additional meetings prior to the meeting. And I think it's something going on with Zoom that needs to be figured out. But the only thing I can do is continuously post the link up on Facebook prior to the meeting in case there's an error like that that occurs. And again, the meetings are always recorded. But it wasn't anyone, it wasn't our fault or the town's fault. It was.
The sound is really good this time. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Al.
That's what happened. So some of these things happen when you're using other platforms, and then you got to figure it out.
Thank you. I want to thank Russ Lazarak too, that you, Russ, right, for sending in your suggestions on the website. Those were really helpful. Thank you. Okay, Mandich Loan Distribution, previous motion discussion.
It has been brought to my attention that the motion that we recorded isn't quite accurate. And Alice Gajano brought it to our attention, and she's here tonight to speak to it. And it is about how the Mandich monies are transferred and the verbiage that's associated with it.
Go ahead, Alice. Thank you.
The original motion requested that the transfer on $59,842.31 received from the state of Vermont from the Mandich lawsuit. At present, we have no money from the lawsuit, which means you don't have that $59,000. And actually, the original proposal and approval from the state was for the money to be used for the ADA project from the payments that Mr. Mandich had made. So what I would like to hear is a motion to correct that original motion, to correct the source from the lawsuit to the repayments that you have in your treasury. I have, I have a sample that I have sent to Russ of the motion that I proposed.
Is this the one in our packet, Sue?
I'm about, is this the one that we have in our packet, Russ?
No.
No, it's the one I gave you last meeting.
That's the one that Russ proposed.
But you have a different one?
I have a different one, a much simpler one.
If you. Yeah.
And I also have copies of the letter that authorized the payments to come from that fund, from the repayment.
Good. If you could.
Toby?
Yeah?
Thank you.
So Alice, are you after a new motion?
Yes.
You are after a, okay. So we thought we were just going to correct it in the minutes.
According, I asked Fletcher about Robert's rules, and he said that it is proper to correct the motion.
The motion, okay.
And he did say.
Good secretary.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we need, if we're not doing, Madam Chairman, if we're not doing a correction to the minutes, do we need to vote to rescind the motion that was done at the last meeting?
Yeah, we can't correct the minutes, that's for sure. So we're going to have to, is that the proper, rescind? Is that the, we can rescind the motion?
I would think we'd want to.
Well, what she's saying, it wasn't that good. So what we made a motion didn't matter. There's no money there. So we could leave that motion like it is and just do a whole new motion on how she wants it.
Well, if we're able to rescind that motion that we passed, I think that would make it clearer.
I don't have a problem with it either.
Yeah.
So you.
Well, it was Toby's motion originally, so we probably have to vote on rescinding that motion would be my guess.
Fletcher said that you could just correct it. You make a motion to correct that motion.
To correct the motion, not the minutes, but the motion.
I quote him, corrections to the minutes, even at the time they were approved by the board, go in exactly as that. What you get in the record is the minutes is drafted included in the next 18 minutes, which is what we did and what you did. And then he go, I think, go with a motion explaining the problem and requests to clarify the point. Ask it to be put on the agenda as a clarification of the source, the current status, and allowable use of the funds.
All right.
So it's simply a matter of clarifying that the funds are going to come from a different source.
Right.
Because there are no funds with the source that you identified.
Right.
That sounds more like you amended Toby's motion, don't it? Because he says you're going to make a correction. Toby made the motion, and now Fletcher's saying you need to correct that motion on how it was made. That's all.
Right, because her motion essentially was to take the same amount of money from the Mandich lawsuit, but this motion.
Will you be amending it to clarify where the money actually came from?
Should it be the Mandich payments?
Right.
I have Toby Young motion to apply $59,842.31 monies received from the state of Vermont from the Mandich lawsuit to the Capital Improvement Fund. Craig Allen seconded.
Okay, so would Toby have to correct her original motion?
Anybody can correct it.
You can, we're adding amendment to it. So you'd add amendment to it that under that motion, we're going to clarify that it doesn't come from the lawsuit. It's coming from the payments.
Retroactively.
So that motion would still pass, would still stand there. We just made amendment to it.
Even though we passed it three months ago?
We're only clarifying the money. I think that's what Fletcher's saying. I don't know. I mean, I'll go along with, if you want to.
It's a correction. It's just a correction of where the money is coming from.
No, I understand what it is. I just want to make sure we have the correct correction.
I don't think, I think we did it Sheldon way or this way. It doesn't matter. As long as it's understood that we didn't get the money from a lawsuit, we got it from payments.
Right.
How we do it.
So Alice's proposed motion would be to move to correct the source of the funds to be applied to the Capital Improvement Funds as, quote, "funds agreed to in closeout agreement number CL 2008 Westminster 0005 for the Daniel Mandich Community Improvement Loan and not from funds received, quote, 'from the Mandich lawsuit as stated in the original motion."
So moved.
Which is.
So moved. Because we didn't change the dollar amount. We didn't talk about.
No, no, it's the same amount of money. It's just the source. No.
I go ahead and move what you just said.
I'll second it.
Moved by Craig, seconded by Toby. And you have a copy of that?
Yeah. Thank you.
No, thank you, Alice. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for doing that, Alice. I know you've been working on it for a while. Tax sale procedure approval. Tax sale procedure approval.
I just want to go make sure that everybody's on the same page with delinquent taxes, that we're not putting undue pressure on folks during this pandemic. I created the, the delinquent tax sequence that I've done so far, and I need, I would like, approval from the board to proceed as I've outlined here. So for those who don't have this in front of them, I'll read it. My first letter was sent out March 10th as a friendly reminder that these parcels are two years behind in taxes. The second letter went out April 15th and stated that we were extending the payment deadline and/or payment contract creation until April 30th because of the COVID-19 pandemic. Just recently, I sent out a third letter in two sets. They were, June 16th, they were sent out, explaining that we had intended yet again, we extended yet again the deadline because of the pandemic. The first set for, of letters was sent to the people that had made no effort to pay and who have not contacted the town hall to explain any circumstances that may have arisen to prevent payments. The second set was for people that have called and made arrangements to pay and who have paid a portion of, on their account. So again, the first set is due June 26th, which is next Friday, and at that point, I will be sending the list to legal counsel on the 29th, which is Monday, at 8:30 for tax sale proceedings. This is the folks that have received now three letters and have not made any effort nor contacted me to, to help themselves with their taxes. The second set of letters, who have made attempts to get their, their account in, in working order, I've given them till October 16th, and most of them have already corrected their, their situation, and I gave them till the 19th of October before I would send it to legal counsel for a November tax sale. So the first group is August tax sale, and if needed, a second one in November. Also in your packet, you have the updated list. Green is the second group of letters, the black are folks that have not called nor made any attempt to, to help themselves with their, with their dilemma. So I truly would like your blessing that this is the right way to go. Two meetings ago, I got that we shouldn't, we shouldn't wait too long, but yet we should be compassionate. So I think we've, we've done that, we've given them two months' worth of, of extension, and, actually, three months' worth of extension. And now we're, we're to the point where we need to start pressing the matter, and which forces them to do the right thing by contacting us and working with legal counsel to make their estates viable.
Seems reasonable to me. Everybody else paid their taxes, so.
I think, I think what bothers me is the no contact. You know, if you're, if you're calling and saying, I need help, then I think we should, do what we can do to help, but to not even contact us back is.
Yeah, I agree. Any other discussion?
So do I have a formal approval of my sequence?
Do you need a, do you need a motion, or you just want to give us your blessing?
I don't need a formal motion, but I do need, I've got two people that responded.
I think it's good.
There's one.
Craig says good.
It's okay. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm fine with you proceeding.
Sheldon?
Good.
Toby?
Yeah, I mean, this is, you're not just putting them up for sale.
That's correct, they still have, they still have months to pay it off. Of course, the legal fees add dollars to it. But even after tax sale, they have a whole nother year to redeem. So there's a lot of time for them to, to do whatever they have to do to, to make it right.
Thank you. Managers report?
Just a couple of quick things. I was asked about the PC member Barry Sheamus, what her term was. It's March of 2023. And just an FYI, the construction at the town hall has started with one man putting up the trim, trying to get those first two offices done so that we can get folks out of the hallway, so that we can open up more of the town office.
Okay, thank you. Boards and commissions?
I have nothing to report.
Other business? Nancy? Could you give your name to Nancy?
Nancy Dalzell. In six days, we will not be able to put food waste into the trash. We still don't know what we're going to do with it. Some people compost, and that's great. Others, who don't have a lot of land, don't necessarily want compost because we don't want critters. Roggerio doesn't seem to have any answers. What do we do?
Russ, you had some options, right?
Yes, and I've been in touch with, with Joe Roggero, and he does have a program, and he has had a program. He's got all the materials now, ready to go. He's got, I think he said he had a half a dozen folks already in a contract with them. So he's up and running, all you have to do is contact him directly.
Apparently, he's been contacted, the office has been contacted, and people have no idea.
I just called him today, Wednesday, Monday.
People are calling his office, and apparently, the office doesn't know. They don't know anything about it, apparently.
I, I will call again to make sure that they're all up to snuff, but for the record, to all the listeners, we do have a program. If you're not self-composting, I've been putting it in the Gazette that you can, you can pass it to a neighbor if they're composting, if that works for both, both parties. But you also have the options of Roggero, who will, will create a contract for you, pick it up whenever you deem it appropriate. And we also have the Rockingham-Westminster Transfer Station. With a $35 ticket, you can get in there, and they do charge a minimal fee for dumping compost. And you also have the Wyndham Solid Waste in Brattleboro, who also has a $35 sticker for your vehicle, and then it's charged accordingly by the weight. So both, you know, there's many, many options, and if you have any issues, make sure you give me a call.
Russ?
Yes.
Don't you think maybe somebody can put it on, Kelly, can you put it on a piece of paper and print copies of it to be handed out?
Absolutely.
And on our website, too.
And it's been on the website. So I, I mean, we have been receiving calls.
Hey, Russ, is there a confusion that people are waiting for Roggero thinking it's part of our recycle in our rubbish, when it actually is not? I mean, I think we got to make sure that people understand the town is not paying to pick up your garbage. But if you want Roggero to do it, you call him. I just.
Picking up garbage is still being picked up. It's, it's food waste.
Right, food waste, but I'm just saying, if people are waiting for that to be another service that the town's doing, we're not doing it. Roggero's doing it, it's not part of our contract, we do the recycling. And I didn't know, Nancy, when you're calling, is that what they're asking? Like, hey, when are you going to start, and they got no idea? Because I know Roggero, if you call and say, well, how much you going to do to pick it up, they're going to tell you how much you got to.
Well, I've been told by people who have contacted the office that the girl in the office that they've spoken to has no idea at all.
Sounds like a failure of communication in the Roggero office.
And I do have a suggestion. If you're going to pass it on to your neighbors, let your neighbors know.
Has this been a problem with you, Nancy?
It could be. Thank you.
Thank you. One other, I have a comment on other business, too. Our dog licenses are down, no surprise there, because we didn't have the rabies clinic. Is there any chance we're going to get the rabies clinic this year?
I'm not sure, that's a, that's a clerk's question, I don't know.
Oh, okay. I'll ask Ally then.
The vets, the vets haven't been forthcoming with when they can do this safely for the public.
Yeah, I understand, but it would be helpful, so.
Susan?
Yes.
He wants to tell you something.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to bring up and find out whether the town manager has made any progress with the emergency management fiasco.
Good question.
Because I do not want to drop that.
None whatsoever. The last conversation we had, they were handling it in-house, and they're not going to go any further with it. You're talking about the incident right here in.
I'm talking about the emergency management incident that happened here in Westminster, and how the state, or whether the state and the federal emergency management ever. So far, when I was chairman, I never saw any correction to what happened, or any reason to believe that anything different was going to happen the next time around.
I doubt you'll ever see anything formally out of that. They said they were going to take it from internally, the Vermont State Police, and they were also going to do it at the state level with the emergency management team. So I, I.
I don't care so much about the state police, I'd, I'd kind of like to get a letter from emergency management, who we are a part of as the town of Westminster, as every other town in the state of Vermont is.
I don't know if this is, will be helpful, but three or four months ago, when Mike Morecki and Nader Hashim had a get-together, and I asked them about it, and they said, oh, yes, you asked us for a report, we have to get on it. And I didn't see anything, so I'll follow up and ask Mike if they've done. I'm not sure what a report is going to do, but it might poke some people.
Mike? I just don't want to, I just don't want to drop that.
Okay. I will ask Mike, anyway, to say, where's our report? What's happening? Be something, you're welcome. Any other business? Date of the next meeting, July 8, 6:30 PM. Do we want to do the same setup, is this working?
Works for me.
Alex, you're all set?
Ask the people on the camp.
Thank you for doing that.
Was it sound good throughout, those folks who are on Zoom?
I heard it worked fine.
Thank you. All right.
That was good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Toby moves to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.